Welcome, everybody, to the Funding Commission meeting on July 25. Calling this meeting in order for setting up the agenda is approval of the agenda. Motion to approve?
So moved.
Seconded by Andrew, seconded by Neil, all in favor? Well, I need discussion. I don't think there is any discussion. Okay, all in favor? Aye. Heard your ayes earlier. Okay, next up is approval of minutes from June 27, which is what we were just talking about. And so Neil, you were not here, but Stephen, you were here. So there's at least three of us who were here.
It was only Neil that was absent.
Yeah. So I would entertain a motion to approve the minutes.
Aye, so moved.
All right. Moved by Stephen. Seconded?
Seconded.
Seconded by Andrew. All right. And discussion. And just for the record, we know that we've got three of us who were in attendance last time, which isn't a quorum, but if Kate or Megan have any comments to add, we can work that in at some point in the future. Okay. First comment is that, what's that? First comment is that Stephen Sullen was not absent.
But Neil was.
But Neil was. So change the Stephen to Neil. I didn't have any major objections or corrections. I think when we're taking minutes on updates to documents, it can get very tedious. I had, let's see. There was one typo in 2203-A. Outside of frontage zone, there was the word floor with an S in parentheses, and the S was capitalized. And I don't know if, were we just capturing all of these updates as we're going, or is there, because you're doing?
I would, if, I am the person that ends up making the edit to the document, I've got the version that I would be working from.
Okay. And that's why I wasn't worried about it, because I knew that we talked about it, and that was there. So I don't think it's anything that needs to be added. Yeah, I didn't have any other comments, anybody else? All right.
No.
Well, then, that's that. So all in favor of the minutes from June 27, as with that one correction? Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Sure. Okay, then, on to disclosures. Any disclosures relating to any topics tonight? Seeing none? Open to the public? Seeing none. Now, on to zoning matters. And we are picking up on page 19 of the 18 May 2016 version of the Form Based Code, which is 2203-E, building type III, the multifamily building. And it's on 19.
And maybe just so people are on the same page, it is your hope to get through the rest of it so that there's the possibility of knowing when you might have the mature, could have everything together and warn a hearing?
Yeah, I'll say that that was definitely my hope. And as I was going through the material, and given that we made it through 19 pages last time, I am not holding my breath. But sure, it's a stretch goal. Depends on how fast we want to turbo through and how much we want to get distracted. Sorry, in this one, and right before this got started, you were, like, we were just talking about where we were in that conversation around multifamily, and I have, yeah?
Yeah, well, the, if you watched the video, one of the last things that was being discussed was this issue of frontage, built-to-zone occupancy, and how would you ultimately tackle it? And it was understood that you had agreed to remove the northernmost frontage zone. It wasn't something that was ultimately resolved. You can tackle this through waivers, but that's later in the document. And I had said, if you wanted to jump ahead, though it didn't seem like there was the interest in that, just you should have the knowledge that for some of these issues, you can address them through waivers, and that's in the last section.
Right. And that is where my note was to, three. So leave the frontage in place and consider waivers, and when we get to that section, we can just have a note that will come back to this, potentially. And then, I don't recall, because I didn't watch the video again, right before this, the, under building height, I think, were we talking about a one-foot minimum?
We were.
Yeah. Okay. So I think that would be it for this page, unless there were any other comments.
The only question I had was around the parking, where it just says, you know, onsite parking is not permitted between the primary street and the building. Alley rear-loaded or side-street vehicle access is allowed. Just thinking about the way a lot of buildings are set up currently, you know, there's, there is parking kind of in front of a lot of buildings.
Yeah, that's one of the things with the Form Based zoning, is to bring the buildings forward. Still have setbacks, but put the parking in the rear. I think with traditional zoning, that may not be a requirement.
Got it.
But yeah.
The illustration here shows street parking. I wondered, I mean, that makes a big difference if there is street parking. Shelburne Road has zero street parking.
Right.
I don't know what to do with that, but...
I would interpret that as onsite parking isn't street parking, because the street is the street.
Right. No, no, Stephen's point was more that there isn't street parking on Shelburne Road, but you know, a lot of other places in town, there will be, though, right? You could sell multifamily on Falls Road, and there could be street parking or something. Yeah, secondary road.
Right, secondary road. But this doesn't apply to Falls Road or someplace like that?
No, it applies to more than the properties that just front on Route 7. There are places where it goes back some.
Long Meadow or...
Right, right.
So if a site gets redeveloped or...
Even the one that we saw that was in presenting last time we were here, right, it's just past the Dunkin' Donuts and the antique place that they were talking about, it's like multi, multifamily now, or kind of got apartments, and you know, you could see how even their plan, the parking would be moved towards the back.
Right.
Like, it makes more sense to me now, given what we're trying to target, so.
And it's where it's applicable, so, yeah.
Right.
But there is street parking.
Your point is justified, though. There is, it is odd that there's cars there, but I'm not sure I'd worry about it too much in the grand scheme of things.
Well, it's nice that there's cars there, but it's definitely odd for Shelburne Road, yeah.
Would not always apply, yeah.
Yeah.
And I think that brings into focus this question that has come up, and that is, you know, where, you have the properties that front on Route 7, and there have been, you know, lack of business and lack of activity, and that's been a focal point. But this district covers a larger area, and it's looking at the development of some land, like the prequar land and other properties, where those things start to make sense. If you think primarily of Route 7, you won't see this. And these graphics are kind of generic, and they weren't tailored to reflect those cases.
But I mean, you think about, like, the rice lumber, right, the part that's going to be redeveloped for residential, if they've decided they want to put a multifamily unit there. I mean, that would be plenty of room for them to figure out this parking scenario.
Yeah. I guess where it makes the most, the biggest effect is the parts of the code that require the first-floor retail.
Right.
Which you kind of, you want, you don't want to park around the back, and I forget what, you know, how the, what the scenario is for, for those, I could look back, but...
Yeah, but if you think about that building up by Palace 9 in South Burlington, it would be similar to that, where, at least where it fronts Route 7, you wouldn't, I mean, yes, there would be ground-floor retail, but you wouldn't have parking there. You might in a different character, character district.
Right.
If the day comes when we're all moving around by jet packs, and Route 7 becomes a lot less used, then maybe there'll be some recovery of the lanes for parking, yeah.
Yeah. So next page is the cottage and cottage courts. For me, it was fairly standard, it was just the, a legend or reference for the letters that are used in the graphic, if that's helpful, because I think only one of them is referred to on this page.
Right.
Yeah, you've got, only other thing I noticed was that, on the parking, again, it says onsite parking is not permitted between the, between the primary street and the cottages, so they're sort of redundant, between the...
Good aye.
And I assume we're not, we don't have to keep noting the two-foot minimum elevation?
Should be one, yeah.
Right.
I mean, I think for all of them, I imagine that would apply, we just, the minimum is to get it off the ground.
Yeah, I would think so, too.
Wait, so, I'm sorry, this between, twice, where, that's in...
Oh, E.
Yep.
Additional requirements of parking. It says, the second line reads, onsite parking is not permitted between the, between the primary street and cottages.
It's, I've got it, on-street parking is not permitted between the primary street and building. Wait a second, am I looking at, oh, I'm sorry, I'm on the wrong, ah, great. Here, I'm just, I'm doing the wrong aggression, my apologies. Gotcha.
So as far the, I just wanted to double-check, because I don't think any of the other building types had square footage for the actual footprint of the building. Is the fact that the cottage is highlighted at 800 square foot max, that's based on a, I mean, I don't think we have maxes anywhere else, but a cottage is different from a house, so there needs to be a limit.
Yeah, they're, they're allowed at higher density, so if they were, if there wasn't the limit on size, you could end up with even greater intensity, so it's, it's a feature of the building type, that they're small, and what's the way that you would restrict the size is square footage?
Right, fair, I was just curious if that came from something in particular, or if it was just established?
Where's the 800 magic?
Yeah.
There are, a lot of people have written on them, Stephen may know this better than any of us, I'm sure that someone gave an opinion that that's the sweet spot.
I'm assuming so, I just wanted to say it out loud.
Yeah, like, people like Scott Chapin, other people that have written books on pocket neighborhoods.
Got it. All right.
I have just a stupid question about this, to entertain me for a second. The intent here is to do a subdivision, right, which is to say the 20,000 square foot minimum, and then...
You need that much land to do a project, yep.
And so then you could put three cottages on it, which would be subdivided, is that?
Yeah, when you say subdivided, you mean in terms of the, just further subdivided?
The ownership of the, each parcel within that.
Right.
Yeah, the regs aren't usually as concerned with the ownership, so that could be further subdivided, or it could be done, you know, with the land in common, and with, I mean, an association might own all of the land, but there might be exclusive use lots that go with a house, but they don't strictly speaking own them.
So this is just silent to that issue?
Yeah, I mean, yes.
Is that okay?
Is it okay?
Yeah.
That it would be subdivided, or?
No, that it was, that it's silent to that. I guess yes is the answer, right? I was just looking at, it wasn't, I wasn't, sort of, like, is the expectation that it gets subdivided or not? And if it doesn't matter, then maybe it doesn't matter, and then just be quiet.
Yeah, are these little dotted lines around the lots, are they footprints?
I think of them more as, like, exclusive use areas rather than lots, because this is, this is talking about the 20,000 square foot area as a lot.
As a lot.
Being developed comprehensively, and that it holds together, and so there would be an association management. It's going to be not unlike, there's kind of a cottage-y portion of the Snyder Project up at Quinney Aska. Those are, it's going to be, the associations will, association will own a lot of it, there's limited area that the individual homeowner is going to have responsibility for. They will own their building and the footprint, but I don't believe they will own much of anything else. But they'll have the right to use a certain area exclusively.
It'd be an interesting conversation around how to subdivide that, depending on how it was developed, if it were a thing.
Yeah, I don't need to take this off track.
What's the smallest lot you can subdivide down to in this area? Dean?
I'm sorry.
If you were to subdivide, what's the smallest lot you could subdivide down to? Smallest size possible?
Well, so, the cottage type looks at the 20,000 square foot as the developed lot, as I see it. Then with these other building types, you have much smaller areas that, oh gosh, they could be 5,000 square feet?
I was just curious if I wanted to take my 20,000 square feet and actually subdivide it, so that, like, if you looked at this image, you had six little micro lots?
Would they be prevented from doing that? I'm not, I'm not sure that the regs would prevent that, because it, that goes to ownership again, rather than what is actually being developed.
Got it.
The standards are trying to make it, I guess, fairly simple, and just saying, if you get that 20,000, then you're applying these standards to that 20,000 square foot area. There's a range in terms of the number, there's a minimum, there's a maximum. If you want to make the dotted lines, ownership lines, I don't think you're prevented from doing that, but...
It strikes me as being a cumbersome process, and it would require the agreement of all the people that are there, and whatever that...
Just subdivide it, or?
Yeah.
Well, the developer's going to do that upfront.
Oh, if they went in saying, this is going to be a cottage court, and then they develop it, and then say, hey, we're going to subdivide it?
Well, a project this, of this type, I would imagine, is going to be developed comprehensively, it's not going to be done, like, on spec. It would be, I mean, it would be done by someone who's going to do all of them, or they've got a group of people that have a call on one of those lots.
Yeah, I agree with that, but to Neil's point, like, we get into these situations of just trying to get ahead of how the system might be changed, or something like that, and, I mean, it strikes me as if there was a cottage court built, and there was more than one dwelling unit on that lot, then technically it could be subdivided, unless there's a minimum.
Well, they would have to come back and amend the, I mean, because in order to get the approval, they're going to have to lay out a plan, and that plan's going to show from three to eight houses on it. And so if someone comes in with a plan for three, and then they want to come back and they want to add two more, well, they're going to have to come, go, they're going to go through an amendment process to do that.
Right.
So it won't just happen on its own.
That's what I'm saying, it would be a difficult, cumbersome process if somebody wanted, if a developer wanted to pursue that.
Yeah, my guess is that it would not be likely for someone to, to, like, underbuild the cottage court, and then have someone want to add more, there would be another cottage court. If there was more demand, there would be a second one, or a third one.
And I agree with not wanting to get too distracted and off on a tangent, but at the same time, let's say that there's a cottage court developed, and there's, on a 20,000 square foot lot, and there's 10 dwelling units. And they build it, and there's 10 people, and they're living in it, and then the developer says, okay...
Developer's gone.
Or developers, the homeowners association, or the cottage association, whatever that is, decides, okay, we want to subdivide this land and break it up into 10 different lots. I think that's, that's effectively what the question is, would that be possible? What complications might that bring up?
Well, there are documents that normally get created at the starting end of this. You get the approval, you're selling people's interest in this, they're going to be, just like moving into a subdivision, there's going to be a declaration that says, who owns what? And so those are going to set the grounds, and they'll, part of that, it's going to be rules on how things would be amended, so it depends on, you know, is it going to be an easy thing to amend, is it going to be a tough thing to amend?
Right, that's what I'm thinking, it would be a cumbersome process that would make it...
I was really just wondering, for this kind of building type, was it envisioned that there would be a subdivision process, or is it envisioned that it's, when it continues lots? So maybe this is the way I answer it, Neil. Many things that go through Form Based zoning will have to go through the subdivision review process. It's, it's not like we aren't doing subdivision review for many of these, many of them, they are. So they will go through a subdivision review for many of these projects. Okay, thanks.
Yeah. And on the 800 square foot thing, I knew there was a reason, I circled it, because the first sentence on the description says that cottages are single-family detached dwellings of 1,400 square feet or less, and a maximum of two bedrooms, and then it says the cottage footprint is 800 square feet max.
But you've got two floors.
Yeah.
Ah, good call. There you go, okay. Footprint different than square footage of place. I'm back in it, all right. So next is 20, which way is this going?
Just, hate to belabor it, but like, the courtyard area per cottage is 600, you could do as few as three, but the courtyard area has to be 3,000, so courtyard area of three would be 1,800, but still have to make sure your courtyard's 3,000 square feet, is that the...
It's a minimum.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, and it does go back up to the lot area per dwelling unit of 1,200 square feet, which, if you take away the 3,000 square foot courtyard, then out of the 20,000 square feet, you're down to 17,000. I bet, if you divided that by 12, you'd get close to 1,200 square feet per cottage.
Yeah.
Yeah, and also, just to, our main goal is to go through Brandy's changes, and these weren't things that were in the original document, so, but at the same time, I want to make sure that we're giving time to discussion, because it's good for us to all understand this and what the implications are.
Do we care about things like, in the additional requirements of open space, it says, "See Article XX for additional open space types permitted in the cottage courts", is that something that should not be XX, I would imagine?
20.
Yeah, that is one that I missed.
Or is it?
Or is that an article?
Yeah, is it back to the regs? Because there's a lot of...
Well, there's the...
Is there an Article XX?
The open space section is going to be coming up later, and it's not as an article, it's...
All the articles are four-digit numbers, right?
In this document they are, but in the standard regs, they're...
Yeah.
Which, and that's, there's a lot of those referred to. There's a 19, because I think I saw an XIX, or...
Okay.
So the open space...
So it could be...
Yeah. So we just want to make sure that that XX is either referring to standard regs, or if it was a placeholder, we need to...
Yeah, it refers to the open space section in this document. Yeah, it's 2204, I believe is what that should be.
So that would be a note to Mary Ann on the cottage and cottage courts on page 20, the open space on lot section. Under additional requirements, it refers to Article XX for additional open space types, and that should say, section 2204.
And it notes it up above, too, right, Dean? It says, "Open space on lot, open for ends, see section 2204.5." So is that just what should be noted instead of the XX?
Yeah, 2204.5, or is it?
Well, that's what it says in this document.
Yeah.
Yeah, because it's, dash L is the figure. Oh, I'm sorry, got it. Yes.
Got it.
Yes, section is, form of bottom of the table is, is 4L.
Okay.
Oh, it's that figure 20, right. So it should say, see section, or, table 2204L?
I would probably refer to the section.
Say section, okay.
Instead of article?
Well, wait a minute, at the headings of each of these, this that we're looking at is Article XX11. So is there actually an Article XX that is another document?
Well, it's 20, it's, this is Article 22, the way she's done it. In the way, the current version of the regs, it's in 17A, because, for whatever reason, it's 17. She felt it would be better to put it at the end, and so it's 22.
Okay, but when we're talking about, see Article XX?
Yeah, well, Article XX, well, Article XX is Article 20, which is the definition section, I think, which isn't what it means to refer to. This has to do with the open space types. So for additional open space types permitted in the cottage courts, 22.4 is the public and civic open space standards. So this is where we will be talking about the different open space types and standards. So people looking at this building type can get a better handle on what the individual open space type requirements are and options are in 22.4.5.
Okay. Makes sense.
Yeah, the convention of doing XX as a placeholder is just confusing, because it's so close to 22.
So on to the live-work unit on page 21. Aside from the legend for the diagram, I didn't have any other comments. Ground floor finished elevation at a zero-foot minimum, makes sense, if it's a live-work unit, it could be a, could need to be on a level.
Yeah. Only question I had was the, no more than four employees not living on the premises may be employed by the business.
I had that highlighted.
Seemed arbitrarily...
I could say, I looked at this, and I thought, this is cold garbage, who's ever going to build this?
Well, I, they actually do these...
Sorry, I didn't mean to be so blunt. Let me, let me put that differently. I was wondering about the purpose of this article, this building type, because I thought, who, who is it targeted at?
With the exception of the, no more than four employees, which, I was looking at that, too, they, they do this out in Steamboat, and it's, it's cool for artisans and people that have small businesses, so you can have your shop on one floor and live above it, and just be in the same spot.
But...
Yeah, and my daughter was over in Sydney, Australia, for a year, and she said, just north of there, there are these things in this town, and they're, like, selling like hotcakes.
So if you were, if you were a developer, and you were going to, if you were somebody who wanted to run their own business, and you wanted to follow this model and build your building, and you're going to live in it, and you follow this Form Based zoning, and then in five years you want to sell it, do, as the zoning administrator, do you have to go and make sure that somebody buys it who's going to live there? Do you know what I mean? Because that's how it was developed? I mean, does that...
Rather than being just a workplace?
Yeah. And then they sell it, I mean, it's, how does, how does the, how does the ownership transfer with the ownership?
I would look at it as, it's the same as if you build an office building. You have tenants, and if those tenants move out, you find new tenants.
But then you have to put an office back in it.
Well, this, you'd probably have to put a residence in the residential part, and the office in the office part.
It's a workshop.
Yeah.
And a living space.
Yeah.
So if, and it's not...
But I guess, what, if this is a unit, let's say, and I sell it to Neil, and Neil just wants to live in the whole thing?
Or rent it.
Could he divide, you know, does, yeah, could you redevelop the ground floor as living space now, and then the whole thing becomes living space? It would be one question.
Zoned as a residential.
Right.
But we're zoning based on form, not use.
Right, but it's zoned as a live-work unit, so that is what that building is for.
Okay.
Like, you couldn't just come in and say, I want to turn this into a...
Kind of condo, the whole thing.
So when it, when it gets sold, it must be sold to somebody who is going to live there and run their business out of it.
Well, at least one of the people that works there has to live there.
It's kind of like accessory apartments, because accessory apartments work only when the owner of the property lives in one or the other. And so, yeah, the people, people ask that question, well, what if someone sells their home and had an apartment in it, and they sell it to someone, someone who doesn't live there, but they're going to be renting the apartment?
Yeah.
And that's the, you know, if someone was to do that, and then there were reports because someone just thought it was wrong, then we would have to investigate, and it could be that it's a violation. If they rent, you know, being absent is probably less of a problem than having a second renter in, where it becomes more like a duplex. And, you know, there are some enforcement issues that would go along with this. Again, there would be documents, it's going to be more than zoning that governs these things, it's going to be just like, you live in the development, and there are association requirements. So I suppose if the vibe of the place is that, yeah, people do live and work there, if someone sells and something goes wrong, then the association's going to be the first line of enforcement. They're going to say, hey, that's, that's not what I bought into.
You're living there and renting the downstairs, you're not actually working, you know, that's illegal, basically.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I don't think Robbie needs to go out and check these places out, but yeah, I... But yeah, I would imagine that if I had a live-work place in one unit and somebody else did.
You guys have a live-work, you have a live-work unit, basically, right now.
Yeah, right.
It's just flipped on its side, eh?
But I would complain like hell if somebody was like renting out both as an Airbnb or something like that in this kind of area, the live-work. So I think that's the self-enforcing thing. And then they call Robbie, or they call you.
I'll just say quickly that when this work was being done, there was a longer list of possible building types, and this is the one that I felt like was probably a reach because I don't know that Shelburne is, you know, urban enough where it's going to be something that a developer would be motivated to try to develop it. But people seemed to think it was cool, and that we should at least make it an option.
Well, and I, I'll just say, I really like the concept, but you're.
Yeah, it's like a Pine Street thing.
Yeah, it's like a Pine Street thing.
Yeah. But it also wouldn't just be that an individual would say, "I want to build this one unit on this one lot." Like it would most, more likely be something like this where there's a developed block that has these, and that's what goes on there.
I see, I see.
But the no more than four employees thing seemed odd to me in the, although, maybe that's just a perfectly valid constraint. The other thing of no storage of materials or equipment may be used, which creates noise, vibration, glare, fumes, odor, electric interference, or other nuisances detectable. I, I would ask what our intention is behind this unit. What sorts of businesses do we think would go in there? Because it, it strikes me as you'd.
Architects. Artists. Homebrewers, brewers, small brewers.
I mean, you get into noise and.
Lawyers, private, private practice doctors. I would think there'd be.
Accountant.
Yeah.
Okay, I guess I was thinking more arts, but you're right.
Tax prep.
I mean, we let off some fumes in our office sometimes, but.
I was just thinking workshop. Workshop to me comes with a lot of those things.
Color markers.
And it's not, it's not like you create it on the other side of the wall. It's outside the structure. It's not between units.
Right.
So if someone wants to be a jeweler, and I'm, you know, a goldsmith, and the people next door hear them sometimes, that's not going to be a violation of this. If they make so much noise that you hear them outside.
Fair enough. And, and I guess the other thing with these.
Matthew Taylor could move up there and live above.
Having these options.
Does he live above this right now?
No, he doesn't.
He has apartments that he doesn't live in.
Yeah.
Lives right over there.
Yeah. I knew he lived close by, I didn't know.
I think also to Dean's point that there were a lot, other building types as well.
We have sort of a classic old type in Vermont, right? The country store where the proprietor lives upstairs and operates the country store down below.
I liked the, I liked the idea. It's, it's the putting into the zoning regulations that the employee has to live in the building. That just from, it just seems like something that is hard to, to manage, to enforce.
Right.
And that gave me pause. I'm not going to be, put my stick in the mud on this one, but.
And it's also to see what the market brings, because having it as an option, it might not, some of these might not ever get used.
Yep. Yeah, I mean, one of the things that we hear is people that would be interested in a building that allows commercial use, they would buy it if they can also live in it. So I think this would be attractive to someone who is the owner, who does want to live there. They have the motivation, because they want to be, you know, have everything in one place, right? Okay, so as far as edits to this page, we have this issue with more letters referred to, I think, maybe than some. Was there another comment that someone had made on the table that I just missed?
We just noted that the.
Yeah, just the.
Ground floor elevation is zero, which we liked.
Yeah, that one can be.
Yeah, I could see some interesting conversations coming out of those types of projects. Be fun. So next page is the mixed-use storefront.
And this is the, just like what we did, but without you having to live there. In that sense, right?
Um, yeah.
I mean, it's live-work, but you don't have to work where you live or live where you work. But someone could.
Well, but it's also not saying that somebody has to. It's.
That's what I'm saying.
It's a variety of uses. So it could be residential, it could be office space, it could be.
And there's a bunch of different size requirements.
Yeah.
It's what the commercial would be if CHT was looking at that site, and they were going to do commercial along the street. But this is the building type that would be the vehicle.
Right. And my question here, since we have, we've had this ground floor finished elevation discussion, I could understand it for a live-work unit, maybe it applies here, but in a lot of cases, we had it at a one-foot minimum.
Two.
Residential type.
Well, I mean, it was default is two. We've been changing it to one.
Right.
The, the live-work unit is a zero.
This one's a zero too.
I guess to me, just I envisioned, well, if you have like a garage-type thing, like that might make it easier. But with the mixed-use storefront, if the point was to have it raised because we're concerned with water infiltration and that sort of thing, then I was curious about the zero.
Well, I was thinking about that too, and it's kind of, we have, we give a range here in this. Zero, minimum to two feet, maximum. And you do need handicap accessibility, and at some point on the building, it would be zero, even if, even on the cases where we're changing it to one foot. At least at the door, it'd be zero, where you come in. I'm thinking maybe we ought to change the minimum to zero across the board.
That was where I was going.
That's where you were heading.
I, I mean, it's just, it's more, it's a curiosity. If the point is that it can't be zero because the, any buildings that get built, we're concerned with, we don't want future water damage to be an issue or something like that, then.
I think it's more design. Well, I mean, you were talking last time about just the practical reality. You want to have the building up so that it's not, the sills aren't getting wet and all that kind of stuff. Those are more in connection with residential buildings, I think. These are commercial buildings where, like you say, it's going to have to be accessible on the ground floor, and so it's going to be a different type of building, and it will be probably brick. It's not going to be constructed the same way, or maybe brick, and.
I think maybe then that the multifamily building.
Should be zero.
Maybe just, that one's definitely zero, just because.
Well, but now you're getting into the aesthetic of it.
Well, and that's what these, that's what's so important about this. It is the design element. It's, you get a different building, that's this.
I'm just thinking about a multifamily, now you're talking, you know, much more, I mean, just the odds of having accessibility issues go up versus a single-family home, right? Like if you're in a family with someone who has, is in a wheelchair, you're going to look pretty carefully at that or look for, you know, houses. Whereas, you know, if all the multifamily units are two feet up, it just creates.
It's the place over here at Harrington Place, one of their big buildings, that's got to be Johnny Ground level, right? Then it's got an elevator, they got a lobby inside. I mean, I took a tour when it opened. You know what I mean? I mean, that's a big building. It's got to be a zero.
This is making me think of my own building, which one's an office, and it could be retail. The other's a house. We have, one entrance has steps going up to it, two feet. The other entrance in the courtyard there has zero. And we figured it out, and that was, you're right, Dean, that was my point last time, was that you do want to try to get it up so that you're not going to have water flowing into it, but it can be figured out. So part of the grade is right at floor level, and then you slope away very, you know, steeply, like a ramp away from it. So I, I feel like, now that we're talking about.
So in other words, you have an entrance to the same building, one side goes up two steps, the other one goes straight in?
Yeah, we have four units, basically, there that could be offices or houses, whatever. And half of those entrances to each, each has two entrances. Half of the entrances to each have zero elevation change from the outside grade, and half have two feet. So I, I would say, you know, based on this rethinking here, that we make every, every use have a zero minimum, and then whatever maximum that, that it says here. I think whatever, you know, it ranges from two feet to four feet or whatever in here. But I would, I would advocate making it zero instead of one feet, or one foot.
If you're building a single-family home, and the minimum was zero, the max was four, you're still likely to build one with a foot or two rise anyway, just because of practicality.
Yeah. Yeah.
I'm just not sure that if you had a one-foot minimum, that you would be prevented, because there aren't, you know, not every site is super, that perfectly flat, where you would, you know, if it's, if it's zero, that you would end up with zero on both sides. There's going to be some grade. So I'm not sure that having a one-foot minimum is going to prevent someone from proposing a building that has the front door that's one foot up, that you reach by steps, and also having the back that is at grade that you don't have to step up into. I'm not sure that that's prevented by a one-foot minimum. I think it comes down to how it's defined, and I'm going to look for the graphic that shows the illustration for ground floor minimum.
I feel like anybody looking at this, if we're trying to attract people to do this, they're going to see one foot and say, "We can't do this. We have to." And it's going to set a whole, like, another discussion and another back to us to try to change it to be zero feet. I, I think, you know, from a design standpoint, I don't see a compelling reason to say we should keep it at one foot minimum. I think we had at least part of any, well, any building, I think, if they choose a zero-foot minimum for their main entrance, the rest of the building, like you're saying, is going to have a bigger drop-off than that. But at least that takes away any cloud over whether at least a part of it, a part of the grade can be at the same elevation as, as the first floor. So I think we have to just say the range starts at zero.
Zero, there's a minimum everywhere.
Yeah.
I mean, that would certainly provide the most flexibility. The other thought would be to say that the residential-type buildings could have the one, one-foot minimum, but the commercial and all of the others could be the flat. But I, I mean, because most, most houses and townhouses have steps.
But more and more, we have to be designed for, for people that are.
People that are going to be accessible or universal design.
Where people have disabilities, and, and they need to be able to roll in or walk in without going up a step.
Yeah, no, no argument.
Yeah. So even on residential, I think we ought to make it zero.
So is that something ready to?
It looks like the max is four feet on the ones that we've been through. Some of them are two, mixed use is two.
Civic building had four, I think.
Some of them are two, most of them are four. Yeah, so I mean, we could keep the maxes what they are. I, I mean, part of this, I imagine, there was the design aesthetic that was in mind behind the building type, and that's why there was a variation. I'm not particular either way. I don't, I imagine that developers would want more flexibility. I don't think that, or at least I haven't heard anybody that's come in and talked aesthetically specifically, wanting to get into this level of detail.
Well, we had the Champlain Housing talked about this. That's why it's been at the front of.
Well, yeah, they talked about the two-foot minimum is not good. I'm, I'm talking about aesthetically. They, they were talking about a, a mixed-use building. I'm talking about residences, townhouse.
Right, well, detached dwellings, one, townhouse is two, they're sort of.
But we were changing that to one.
Right, sort of different.
So so far, we've changed anything that.
Multifamily is one.
Was two to one, but now we're seeing that we've got zeros and what to do.
Cottage is two.
I would vote for zero.
So if we, to the greatest flexibility, we would just have all of the minimums be zero and keep the max where they are.
Yeah.
And then let the.
I mean, that resonates with me. I, I imagine that all of these other regulations that have to do with massing and, and overall building height and roofs and this sort of thing, it's going to drive how these buildings look more than the height off the elevation, you know, off the, off the ground. And it, it does feel like allowing flexibility to, you know, to, to deal with your site and your building type base makes sense to me.
It, it makes sense to me too. I think from a town planning perspective, I mean, it's what, uh, like my, my parents live in a, a community in Virginia that has, like, they've got their conservancy rules. And, you know, your, your mailbox has to be a certain color, a certain height. You're like, this has to be exactly this way, and it, it gets to the point where it's just absolutely ridiculous. And, and I can understand why people would not like that. At the same time, as I've said before, and no offense to the town, but we also don't want to look like Houston where it's, you can just put anything anywhere, and it doesn't really matter. You just, it's out there, and whatever you want to build.
Sure.
Go for it. So having, like, what, having some semblance of what these structures look like to have a consistency within the town, I think is the point behind this. From my personal perspective, a, a foot isn't going to make a difference to, to me anyway, but I could see how that was, that's the purpose behind this, and there might be strong feelings. I just don't know where they would come from.
Is there any way to put something like, you know, ground floor finished elevation, zero minimum, four max for like, I don't know, whatever the single-family home one is, and just say, "Two foot preferred" or something like that, you know, like?
I mean, it doesn't mean much because it's just, you know, another way to handle this, if, if you're ready to say, "Let's make it one," or "Let's make it zero," is we can have a, a parking lot of waiver items, and so we could explicitly add a waiver for ground floor minimum. And that could be one way to deal with it.
Yeah.
Although, I understand Stephen's point where if someone looks at this and they, they see that, and they go, "Ah, another one of those communities that's got a one-foot minimum," and they, those communities don't understand what we need for access. Maybe that's going to send them to some other place. And if it was zero, they'd be here.
Or at the, the smaller end of it, I guess, they, they question it, and then they take up your time or Robbie's time in the planning zoning office, just like asking the questions that are already explained elsewhere in the waivers. I think we ought to make it as clear as possible right up front.
I feel like the only person who might have a strong feeling about wanting a two-foot minimum might be Kate, because she was one of the drivers behind a lot of this form-based piece. I don't, but I don't remember her when we talked about lowering it. She didn't seem to have any pushback. I mean, I'm just trying to think who, whose voice you might be missing on the committee that would be like, of course it needs to be.
Or even beyond the commission, just from whoever's going to be doing these things, moving them. But I like the idea of a parking lot, and I say we move through, and then that is, I, I'm going to just make an assumption that we're not going to make it through this whole document tonight, so we're going to have another discussion, and we can, we'll hopefully have more people then, and we can revisit. If that works.
It does, yep.
Okay, so on the mixed-use storefront then, I suppose we just keep it at zero and two. Were there any other comments on that, on page twenty-two there?
Nope.
Okay.
Were there any worries with the, the hotel development to these? Wasn't there something about these numbers, like it's twelve and twenty? Number of units per building, or was it Champlain Housing that he, he mentioned that, that?
Well, people, different people have mentioned that, but that has been, that's in the, that's in the multifamily building type. The cap on units is twenty-four. They would like it if it was a higher number.
Right.
But I don't remember the group coming down to say, "Yes, let's definitely raise it." I mean, there is this issue of scale. I think, I think maybe you didn't dive into it because it was one of those things that may, would take more discussion, and the hope was to really just blast through what Brandy had done and decide if you were ready to warrant it.
Just because I'm.
But it's a fairly simple thing. If you know intuitively what the number should be.
And which ones M-U-S-C-D, mixed-use something character district? M-R-C-D, I don't remember all my acronyms anymore.
Mixed use and mixed.
You want to see it on a map or something?
What does that mean? Like, it's twelve and two of them and twenty-four and others, so like, where is it limited to twelve?
Well, if you look at the math on that, in the beginning of the document, it has the character districts on it.
So I thought you were talking about the number of, well, the number of twenty-four units.
So mixed residential is one, and M-U-S-C-D, which is mixed-use street? Yeah, so mixed-use street and mixed-residential, so.
So mixed-use street is fronting Shelburne Road.
Yeah, so, and then the mixed-residential is.
Further south.
Further south. Where you can get to twenty-four is anywhere in green, no. Further south. Where you can get to twenty-four is anywhere in green? No. Where can you get to green? Take twenty-four. It feels like M U S C D would be where you'd want to have twenty-four.
I agree. Yeah, you want the higher density in those node areas, which is the orange ones. Yeah, that's just the concept of where you want the most density and I would imagine.
Well, it's gonna be, you don't want, you don't want to, this is, I think, intended not to be a backdoor into residential on the the street. You you want to have a balance between residential and commercial. And so those places where you want to have, you don't want to have the residential drive out the retail or overwhelm the retail. I mean, you want people there to to buy things at the retails if the retail's viable. So maybe those numbers don't make sense and you'll need more people living there in that primary Route Seven corridor. But that is what I think they were trying to do with this.
So the mixed-use neighborhood, that's way down by Rice Lumber?
That's one of the places with it.
Yeah. I'm just, the two yellows are kind of hard to distinguish for me. Mixed residential, I mean, the twelve makes sense to me.
Yeah, it is Rice. That's the mixed-
Is it also up north but towards the lake? Or is that?
No, that's the, that's the residential, mixed residential.
Got it.
So it would be more residential in those areas back than in the place where you might think, why wouldn't you allow more residential there?
You you can have twenty-four units down by Rice Lumber and Dunkin' Donuts and Archie's.
No. It's it's mixed, mixed residential and mixed-use street are both twelve. Everything else is twenty-four.
Yeah, so you can have twenty-four here. Where else could you have twenty-four? The green corridor?
Uh, the orange.
No, the orange is M U S C. That's limited to twelve.
That's twelve.
Like, business camp, I mean, could the?
In the green character district.
You have to look at the table to make sure the building types are allowed.
Special use district, so green, purple. Yeah, it's in, it's in all of these, so it's-
So it's everything down here? And even the business campus here or no?
In you, M C D is the mixed-use neighborhood, the green corridor, and the special uses is where you would have twenty-four.
Okay.
So.
I guess I'm okay with that, that to Dean's point of in the orange mixed-use street that you wouldn't, you'd want to have multiple small ones rather than big ones crowding out retail.
Or office space or, I guess that would be the argument.
Yeah.
Does seem kind of intuitive.
Yeah. What do you think?
I think it seems kind of intuitive. And I think that, you know, when Tyler was in, talking about that Champlain Housing project, we had a discussion on on the commission and with him about how there was less opportunity for that sort of commercial development on, or less demand for that kind of commercial development on Shelburne Road. There's more demand for multi-family housing.
I mean, this one is gonna force you to have retail on the first floor, though, right? This mixed-use storefront?
You wouldn't, you wouldn't do that type without a commercial.
Right.
And he was saying, Tyler was saying, that they considered that as an option.
Right.
To be how the place is laid out, but then they decided not to because it was only limited, it would limit them to twelve, twelve units. But they could put a multi-family building there and they could get more units out of it.
Twenty-four.
Which seems weird. So why, I mean, if you're gonna put twenty-four units on a property, would we prefer to have it have retail underneath it? Do you know what I mean?
Yeah, especially up in that area.
Well, as a, so we don't get too stuck. I made a note from a parking lot perspective because this is not part of Brandy's changes anyway. But I agree that it does address what Tyler was talking about. And I feel like I'd almost want, I mean, I I do want Kate's voice in on that because I'm sure, I don't want us to be suggesting changes without an appropriate background or, because there might be reasons why it was done that way.
Okay.
Uh, okay.
Commercial liner?
Commercial liner.
What does liner refer to? What is that?
Liner?
Liner?
Like it lines the street?
Yeah, it's a bit more shopping-centery in some ways, if you were gonna use that term. Like lots of little shops. Imagine living above brokers, you know.
Any, any questions or comments aside from? I mean, it would be like, this this one would be done if you were to say the, what is it, Bay, the Shelburne Bay Plaza there? Like, if you were gonna put something like that in there, this is what that would go on.
Yep. What is a C U P?
Where is that?
Says a limited amount of onsite parking may be permitted between the primary street and building with a C U P.
Conditionally used permit?
Okay. Got it.
Then parking section is deep if we get to that. Any other thoughts on this page? All right.
I like the look a lot better than what we have now, the inverse with parking in the front in the building.
Agreed. Okay, so tech shop building?
And these are allowed anywhere?
Tech shops.
I see, I see where they are here. Yeah, okay. Pretty much everywhere.
Five of them, anyway. Any questions or comments?
The graphic doesn't make it look very appealing. It looks, I don't know.
It's like a place you'd go get your oil changed.
It's like one of those little workspaces, but bigger and without the living. Perfect. All right. Next one is the flex commercial industrial building. And instead of repeating it, just the the legend, I think, just applies to all of them. I did not have any comments on this one. Nobody else does? The next one is the general multipurpose building. And I had no comments there as well.
Would this be what, the one up by the Palace Nine?
Looks kind of like it.
Characterized as?
Well, it's that or the mixed use.
I mean, it says it is not intended for residential or retail uses. It would, right, this would be-
Okay, so this is more off, full officey.
It's all commercial.
That one has residential upstairs?
Those are apartments that are being rented above.
Great.
It's a nice building. I popped in there the other day.
Is it rented at all?
Uh, I don't, actually, I don't know if the-
Bank is in there or not?
Yeah, I had to go visit them.
The farmhouse group is gonna put in a restaurant in there.
Oh, nice.
They are going to?
Yeah. Sandwiches, not like, not a nice one, a sandwich place.
Hey, it's gonna be nice sandwiches, though.
I bet it will, I bet it will be.
Those guys do everything well.
Can we put that in the regs? The sandwiches, they need to be nice.
Need to be nice sandwich place.
See Stephen sail in for definition of nice.
Nice. All right. Nothing else on that one. We've got the civic building. This one, I was mostly just curious about, there wasn't any, I mean, there's no setbacks or anything that may have been by design or just?
I think it, well, it was.
I mean, I'm sure it was. It just kind of struck me as odd that if we, I mean, we have setbacks for all these other building types and theoretically, a civic building could be right up, like, zero setback to the primary street, which just didn't seem like that makes a lot of sense.
There's, there's a thing in statute that says that public facilities can be regulated to a degree unless it affects their their function. I forget exactly the term. So some people are of the view that actually, according to statute, a public facility is not gonna be subject to a setback requirement. And I don't remember if, when this set of numbers was drawn up, that was part of the reason, but there is that reality that if someone is doing, if the community is doing a public facility, you know, we can show them the setback requirements and if they can meet them, they can meet them. But if they don't want to meet them, there's basically language in statute that would allow them to say, well, it's gonna influence our our function. We can't do it, so we're gonna meet a reduced setback. So, you know, I don't know if Brandy's view was that since you aren't required to do that. Or maybe she just felt like with civic buildings, they're different. They really are different and may justify getting close to a property line.
They they are, but they can be in all character districts. And if we're looking for an aesthetic where we've got buildings that are closer to, let's say, Route Seven, like, closer to the road, but with a setback to have some green space and openness and that sort of thing, it strikes me as odd that a civic building wouldn't be required to fit that same aesthetic.
Well, it does say that there is something. It's under additional requirements. Uh, it says minimum setbacks from Shelburne Road identified in figure twenty-two-hundred B superside, supersede the requirements above.
That's the building, that's-
Where, you know, where is that?
That's the regulating plan. That's the map that we're looking at. It's got those dotted lines that have-
Okay.
But the, I mean, the, there are some community facilities that are, there are some buildings that are included in the civic building type that are not community facilities. So like churches, I mean, this is the thing. A church could take advantage of this and it is not gonna have to meet very many requirements.
Yeah, I think I disagree with that and I wanna-
Does call out, though, that that they're designed in connection with open space, such as a green plaza park, playground, community garden, stormwater management or natural area. So in other words, have to have something else besides the building. Have to do something with some space.
Yeah, I would just be very curious to hear what an example might be of a civic building that needs to go straight up to the road and go against the aesthetic that we're trying to accomplish with everything else, form-based related.
Well, it can't go against the road.
Be really more the reverse, I think. If if the people are believing that should be close and instead people said, no, it's gotta be way back. We want it to be way back.
Yeah, I would think that would be the, that's how it would manifest. It would be this gap in the otherwise uniform facade.
So it could be close or it could be far, right?
Yes, it's just the rear and the side that have constraints. Wait.
You're right then where someone else's begin.
Yeah. Rear and setback in this.
Yeah.
It's a town's road. If they want to build their town building on the road, they can do so.
But can the church decide that it's their road?
Okay, so you're right, that that builds on the additional requirements that is listed on all of the building types, but that's true. If the minimum setback is gonna be, there is a little bit of difference if you're in a node or not, but it does have a minimum setback, so that would apply in this case. I gotcha. Okay. My concern is not no longer valid.
I mean, it's funny because it has all these other requirements, you know, street-facing transparency and articulation. I mean, those are all spelled out for it.
Can have any building element it wants to.
Yeah, I think when I saw that, I was just thinking that you could, based on this, you could have a building right up against the road, but you can't because of that, the twenty-two-hundred B superseded.
Okay.
You develop it as a synagogue and then convert it shortly thereafter into what you really wanted to have it all along.
And then I had a note, do we, uh, let's see, page twenty in the original document, the red line, is the twenty-two oh three dot two that gets into building materials? And maybe it was somewhere else in this document, but I didn't recall seeing that. So that all went away, right?
Materials went away.
Okay. And that was after she had done this red line. We decided we weren't gonna do that. And that's why it's not here.
That's what I remember.
All right. Okay, so that's twenty-seven. So we're on to section twenty-two oh four.
Halliburton Row.
Oh, and where does this tie in here? I just need a second. Well, unless you have comments, go for it.
Go for what?
I mean, if you have comments on this page, go for it. I just wanted to get oriented with this other one. All right, my first comment was on twenty-two oh four dot one C, existing streets point two. In red, the figure twenty-two oh four dash D through, and then it-
Blank.
Yeah. That was just a, I think we saw that somewhere else.
Um, twenty-two four, twenty-two oh four D, you're saying it's the wrong reference?
No, I'm saying it just says that figure through space, space for the applicable street.
Gotcha.
So it'd be like, the thing, right, it's gonna be, the last street type-
Oh, right.
Is J? Pedestrian passage?
Yes.
Okay. So Dean's got it, but for Marian, twenty-two oh four dot one C, number two, it should say figure twenty-two oh four dash D through J. The next one, the point three, I just had a question on as far as public works impact, as far as what that can, if it's conforming or if that matters.
Wait, so we're still in one C existing streets or?
Correct.
One C three?
Yeah, so when it says construction modifying the existing base or sub-base, the-
Pavement milling and-
Pavement milling depth of four inches, like, is that consistent with the public work standards or are we gonna end up with a conflict or?
Well, um, the public works specifications don't get in, yeah, the public work specifications don't get into reconstruction. They don't get into this stuff. This is, um, this is establishing jurisdiction. This is kind of like the stormwater thing where if you are doing a certain amount of change, then you're gonna be subject to the requirements. So this is, this is along those lines, but the public work specifications right now, I don't believe that include anything that is a definition of reconstruction.
But not even reconstruction. So let's say, for example, and this may, this probably isn't the case, but pavement milling to a depth of four inches or greater. If the public work standard said six inches because there's an engineering reason and that's what Shelburne wants to do, then we should be consistent.
No, what they're saying is if you do any milling four inches deep or deeper, then it's a rebuilt, rebuilt street and therefore this applies.
Oh, okay.
This is defining when, how to define something being rebuilt. Otherwise-
So it's not, it's not a performance-
You know, if you're just repaving it, you're not rebuilding that whole street. But if you mill deeply, you widen it by more than three feet, you extend it by more than two hundred feet.
So I'll bite. What does pavement milling mean?
You're going in and grinding it out.
Grinding it out.
And then maybe onsite re-reconstituting it and putting it back down, or maybe it's getting shipped off.
So I get that that would, for the purposes of this section, be defined as rebuilding. What I'm saying is if, from a best practice perspective, our public works specs say that if you are to mill pavement, it needs to be to a certain depth for certain reasons.
Yeah, and our our public works specs don't do that. Our public works specs would basically say what, how it has to be built the first time. But right now, they don't get into how you would take care of it because the public work specifications focus, at least historically, has been on, you build it, build a really solid road and if you want it, bless you, you want it to be turned- want it, bless you, you want it to be turned over to the town, the town will take it over. And at that point, the town is going to dictate what happens to the road. But short of it is, the public works specs don't do that.
Yeah, I feel like I could easily get hung up on this, but I'm happy to let it pass.
I think you ought to let it pass.
Yeah, I'm just going to let it pass. It's fine.
You gotta let it go.
It's gone. All right, so the, what's next? 2204.2B, point 2, has another, needs to have figure 2204-D through J. And same thing in 2204.2C. Anything else on this page?
Yeah, just to tie up the public works specs, the public works specs are really about building the first time. But some people have suggested that they should say more about maintenance, and one example is things like lane striping.
That's a great example. And that's kind of where I'm coming from, is if somebody is, is looking at that and says, okay, well, we've got, like, the top of this street doesn't look really good, so we're just going to scrape off the first inch and then put something on there, and it's crap. Like, that would go against conventional wisdom and-
Yeah, and our, and our stances right now, that that's, if it's a private street, we don't tell them how to do it. If it's a public street, we tell ourselves how to do it.
But anybody that wants the private street to be taken over, oh, sorry.
Yeah, if they build, if they build something and they want town to take it over, then they have to meet our requirements that first time.
And they'll know to do that.
Right. I mean, again, I'd like to think that, in general, the right thing gets done, but I got laughed at when they example of, well, you don't want to build a tall building and shade your neighbor. And I said, well, I feel like neighbors should talk, and everybody laughed. So, I get that, but-
I think, I think three different times this week, people came in, and the first question was, have you talked with your neighbor?
Right. It's just, for some reason, we don't do that anymore. All right, so, let's see.
But I think, maybe just for a second, the compatibility between these regs and the public works specs is something that is important. And as the public work specifications evolve, we are going to have to keep track of whether or not there are conflicts that develop. Because what we're trying to do with form-based zoning and the street types is not what Paul Goodrich would like to see happen with the streets. And right now, there's not a conflict, because the town of Shelburne doesn't say, you must make it a town street. We just say, hey, you build it, you want to keep it private. Really, all we're concerned about is if the fire department's happy. One thing that could happen in the future is the town says more things have to be public, in which case, people may say, well, we don't, if it has to be public, we don't want some small street. It's going to have to be bigger, and that's, of course, going to affect the design.
Okay, so 2204.3.
Just, sorry, before we leave 2204.2C, that's got two sections under it. I was wondering, the, the Wheelers, when they were in, you maybe remember that they had talked about this problem where with the street types, they had, they had a narrow area where they wouldn't be able to have the right-of-way. It would be too narrow. And so, one of the ideas I maybe would want to consider at some point, maybe it's later, is that street design could have a third paragraph having to do with the width of the right-of-way, and that it could be allowed to be less when there are constraints, or something like that. But that's just a heads up, maybe more than actual proposed language, because I don't have actual proposed language.
Was that building in the green corridor?
Is what built, and, oh, is that-
The property that they were talking about?
No.
Just south of there? Was it just south of the green corridor?
Which one?
The Wheeler lot?
Is that the hotel?
There.
No.
In the green corridor. The, as an example, Yankee Doodle Motel is in the green corridor. And that's a project that's going through form-based zoning, where they, they did get affected by that setback.
Which hotel?
Yankee Doodle.
Yankee Doodle Motel is the site of a form-based zoning project that's going through review now. And the green corridor has that expanded setback, basically. And they're doing three buildings, and I know that that, the fact that there is that larger setback from Route 7 in the green corridor was a little bit of an issue, because it pushed the buildings back.
Yankee Doodle, the one that's just past Archie's going north?
On the other side, left side, yeah.
Yeah. Same side as Archie's.
Well, same side as-
So, all right, I'm thinking of Archie's.
So, is this, so your, your comment about the difference in road widths, is that, is that a waiver issue?
It might be. When we get to waivers, that maybe that's, if it's a simple enough fix, that maybe that's the way to deal with it. But the property that they are in isn't green corridor, no, it's the mixed-use neighborhood.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
Well, I think also, when you were talking about the Wheeler lot, if it's okay to 2204.3 now, point 2 talks about creating street stubs, that they need to be provided to adjoining undeveloped areas, and they'd be completed when that property is developed. Nothing, not proposing a change or anything. It's just based on what we've seen from case studies that is a point of contention.
Hmm, all right.
I want to make sure that-
Street stubs are bad, is that what you're saying?
Straight off of Webster Road where they proposed the street stub, and it was pointing right at somebody else's property, and that person had a real problem with that, as if they were going to plow through their property in order to complete the street that's stubbed.
Proposed parallel road down there?
Yeah.
That's gone.
Right.
Yeah, there's that, but there's also with a lot within the district that, from a connect, well, yes, I'm not going to quote that. Yeah.
It just seems like, the only issue I would see is that you put the stub where you want it, and then the next developer would rather have a connection somewhere else. You know, like, is there work being done that's going to be undone or redone later? So-
That's the risk.
I mean, it's hard without having a master plan to say, if this were to happen, this is how it would happen.
This is where the roads would all go.
That's where things get contentious.
Neighbors have to talk.
Right. Maybe someday, who knows? We don't all blow up.
Got another example of your 24, this thing, 240D through.
Or is that, oh, yes. J. Okay, so, yeah, 2204.4B.
I like a lot of this stuff.
And the, I have not studied the public works specs, but do they, they don't, do they have street tree specs or any of that?
There is language having to do with street trees, but it's pretty minimal.
Okay. As the scene in that, that-
This thing that's referenced.
Yeah.
The specs are really more oriented towards making sure that there aren't conflicts between the trees or the things that you plant and utilities underground. That's, that's their view. They don't really care much, as much about trees as they are right now.
And the canopy's 14 feet high, so you can drive under it.
Right.
Limbed up.
Yeah, that's, that's one of the conversations, is that the fire department wants, doesn't want their truck scratched and move the trees back.
Town invested in it. Keep that scratch free.
Support that. One you can see in places like Webster Road, the path, you know, someone's bushes protecting their house from Webster Road path. Each spring, they grow, and all of a sudden, you've lost a photo of the path, maybe, you know, and sort of like, all right.
There's some of that on the sidewalk.
Yeah, that happened to the sidewalk.
There's some of that on the sidewalk on Falls Road, too. I sometimes think about taking a pair of clippers along with me when I come out for a walk, and just, every day, just clip a couple down.
Just have a little, yeah, little-
Yeah, just walk around.
Here's one.
Dad, oh my God!
On to the next page, page 30. I guess that's 2204.4B. Just a general comment on that section where it's the FGH at the top left of that page. We, talking into understory trees with a minimum of 300 cubic feet of quality uncompacted soil, and shade trees with total minimum of 1,000 cubic feet of uncompacted soil. I'd just be curious to see what that would look like in practice. Because I think, as I was reading through some of these things, I was just starting to see some, it felt to me like it was almost contradictory, like you, in terms of space. And I think when we get into the street types, I have some specific examples, but I'm just curious what that planning looks like from a sketch review.
So, okay, I would just say that these are numbers that did get a fair amount of discussion with people like Kate.
Oh, yeah, I'm not disputing them.
But you just want to see it visualized?
Yeah, I kind of just want to see how that would be, like, how that would be presented or say, yep, okay, you did that.
Yeah, like, what's 1,000 cubic feet of uncompacted soil? It could be, like, one foot by one feet by 1,000 feet down.
Yeah, like, I feel like it just doesn't, it didn't sit right when I was looking at it.
Yeah, I bet Kate would know.
And, and again, this is one of those things where ordinarily, I would say, well, yeah, there's a reasonable way of doing this and an unreasonable way of doing this, but if people don't talk and systems get gamed, then the language needs to be able to address it.
Yeah, or it just gets ignored, because nobody knows of it.
Right.
Yeah, I mean, the configuration of those, of that volume is going to depend on the species of tree. So, it's, I think that, if you're wondering, should it be more detailed and govern both the width, as well as the volume and things like that, it's going to depend a lot on the species.
Right, but we're, I mean, we're not getting into species. We're just talking about understory trees and shade trees.
Right. But the idea is for the regs to have something that gives the town the ability to insist on telling, not having a situation where people show all these pretty trees, but they're going to die.
Right.
And so, someone can say, you don't, you know, show us that you've got the amount of space for the trees to actually survive, and they would have to show them. But to go further and say that shade trees must have access to a minimum of 1,000 cubic feet of uncompacted soil with the following dimensions, those dimensions aren't going to make sense unless you do it for a bunch of different types of trees, is what I'm saying.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not disputing it. I just, I'm just curious what that would look like, because I-
Just how large the 1,000 cubic feet would be in one of these scale sketches?
Or how it gets interpreted. I mean, there's a, there's a, there is a spirit of what this is. And to Stephen's point, like, you're, you, 1,000 cubic feet of uncompacted soil, if you want to do the right thing for the tree, I'm sure there's probably, like, down to a certain depth and have it that way. But if, if there's a project and there's limited space for whatever reason, or the way it works out is to say, okay, we're going to half that diameter and just say, yeah, we're going deeper. That's 1,000 square feet. Or, I mean-
Cubic feet, yeah.
Or cubic feet. Yeah, like, the, it's just more, I'm just curious what, how that manifests.
Because the, the sketch there on the page, it shows that minimum 25 square foot of impervious planting area for the tree, right?
Yeah, but that's not called out anywhere in the regs.
But that's not even what that looks like.
No, the-
Oh.
I was just trying to find where that's referenced in the verbiage, but it's not.
And what the verbiage says is that they're, I mean, it needs to be uncompacted. This, this shade tree's much of access to a total minimum of 1,000 cubic foot of uncompacted soil. I mean, if you put a sidewalk on a street down, that's compacted soil, right? So, if you have 25 square feet, that's your minimum impervious planting surface, so then you got to go down 40 feet to get 1,000 cubic feet. Is that how that works?
That's how it works.
Yeah, if the squares are five by five.
It's a pretty deep hole.
Yeah. And I get, that, that's where I'm coming from. I just, I'm curious what the, how this gets applied.
Does anybody know what the difference between a shade tree and an understory tree is?
Yeah, I think that's-
Yeah, it's defined.
That's defined, okay.
Shade trees, I think, are bigger.
Understory is under, I guess.
Yeah, there is a definition, and we're, I mean, we're getting into the tree section.
Yeah.
First, I guess.
We don't need to get bogged down with that, as far as I'm concerned.
Yeah, so for the purpose of notes, 2204.4C in point 1 and point 3, we have the same situation of the-
Yep, fill in the gaps.
Yeah, D through J.
So, do we want to put in that 1,000 cubic feet and 3,000 cubic feet in that parking lot to talk about later?
Sure.
Have a waiver for the 1,000 cubic feet? Just kidding. Just kidding.
It does seem strange to have 25 square feet of area and then happen-
Forty foot.
Yeah. Okay, so then are we going to 31? Now we get into the street types. For all of these, I'll just say a general comment that I, I'm curious about the curb radius. I think most of these are 50. And vehicular design speed and pedestrian crossing time. Something doesn't jive with those three the way that they're implemented here. And I'll fully admit, it might just be me. But like a, yeah, I, I'm just, I imagine that these numbers came from established, well-established zoning docs, but as far as pedestrian crossing time, there is, I mean, it rain, I understand there's a width, but like, in the neighborhood residential, 2.7 seconds to cross 34 feet. Okay.
Yeah, run.
Yeah. I mean, that, that doesn't strike me as a stroll across the street. So, I'm just, I was just curious, those numbers stood out to me.
Or you just have to cross 20 feet in 2.7 seconds, so that you're out of the travel zone. I don't know.
I don't know.
So, it's pavement width, same in both?
And yes, I recognize I'm breaking my own rule, because this isn't a Brandy change. So, it's just more-
Oh, no, the pavement width is different. You're right. It's 38 to 40 for the village and 34 to, for the neighborhood residential. That would probably cause that to be a quicker cross.
The next question now is, do we have pedestrian crossing time defined? And no. I, I don't know that that's, it's not a critical thing at all. It was just something that stuck out to me. And it's not a Brandy thing, so how about we'll just note that as well?
Where are these streets called out to be required in certain zones, or are they? What's, what's the reason for these to be in here?
So, like, the Village and Neighborhood Center street would be applied to the, the four-character districts noted at the bottom of the section?
Oh, I see.
In the same, in the same way that you choose the building types, you choose the street type.
Yeah, one of them is like a one second, or one-
No, it just says the average pedestrian walks about four feet per second. So, at 2.7 seconds, you're only getting across 11 or 12 feet.
So, it's not, it's not the time it takes someone to cross. I think what it is, it's the leading pedestrian interval, which is, if you are having a signal, it's a, again, if it's what I think that it is, it's, when you have vehicles waiting, you give the pedestrian a certain period of time to start into the crosswalk. And if there's no one there, then the cars are going to go. But if a pedestrian is there, they're going to continue to wait until the pedestrian gets across. It's not a crossing time.
Oh, it's like a lead time.
It's something like, I think that it's more like a lead time. It's not the time that it would take, because think of an elderly person who's, no, they just, doesn't compute as the time to cross. just doesn't compute as the time to cross.
So I'll just add to the parking lot perhaps a definition at some point.
Yeah.
If that makes sense.
So the question, where did this come from? A lot of the things that are in this document come from this, which is something called smart code, and I'll take a look into this to see if it explains, but I know that some of these things are explained, like the question-
Yeah, and I saw that that was referenced in other areas, so that's good.
One thing I noticed on these diagrams of the street cross-sections is that they give elevations from floor to floor of the buildings that they're talking about, and they're different for each area, so like 10 feet and nine feet for a second floor. And they go floor to floor, and you know, not that they rule the building types themselves, but that goes back to whether, when we're looking at the, the types of buildings, whether we go floor to floor or floor to ceiling.
Well, yeah.
Did we decide to go floor to floor on those other-
No, I think we kept it at floor to ceiling.
You did keep it at that. But I think that some of this is that they're drawing graphics from different places, so some of them use the graphics to show multiple things. I think what should have happened in these is that they block out those edges because those floor numbers don't, they're not needed here.
It's completely irrelevant for this section, yeah.
I think they're just trying to show the character of the buildings, like some have a taller first floor if they're in a business park, and they're 12 feet.
It does do that, it's just, like you say, though, it could be confusing to people if they start comparing it to the numbers that are in the building types, and they're going, oh, how, how come?
Yeah, and for these cross-sections, the building heights aren't necessarily, aren't needed.
Right, because the building types are going to be whatever the building types are as part of the project.
Again, not part of the brandy changes, I don't know if that's something, we can make a comment and just say, if there's a way to remove those or cover them or something, could do that?
I, um, I guess, I don't, I wouldn't see that that's important to cover them since they do, they're not relating to the buildings, but I, I don't remember how we left it on the definition of a story height. Did we change it to?
No.
So we didn't change it to floor to, floor to floor?
No, because floor to floor is, I, I think we were looking at it for, floor to floor probably makes sense from a construction perspective, but not from a-
Design.
A design, like yeah, when you're inside on the floor, what is the floor, what is the ceiling?
Yeah. Okay.
In terms of masking those, those parts of the graphics, we can probably do something like that, maybe the easiest way to deal.
Well, yeah, I, I wouldn't find that important to mask them. I'm just noting this, that they're talking floor to floor, and maybe we should go back and look at doing floor to floor, because it seems to be, I, I'm, I'm re-visiting this floor to floor thing back in the things that we've already decided, and so maybe I shouldn't go back there.
Want me to make a note for floor to floor?
Yeah. Put that in the lot.
I have a question about the little box in the upper left-hand corner of these tables, where it says example use of hierarchy. Why is that there? Like I was looking at it and I was just assuming that for that street, it was a 60-foot right-of-way width and a 20-foot pavement width, and I was like, oh, it doesn't agree with the street in the table down below, but, and I realized it's just an example use of hierarchy, so I'm then I'm wondering where that little hierarchy is used somewhere else?
I did the same thing. It's, if you look at the first one, the Village and Neighborhood Center Street in parentheses, it has VNC dash 60 dash 40.
Yeah.
That's just giving you a, an example of how to use that hierarchy. So in that case, it's-
Gotcha.
VNC is the Village and Neighborhood Center Street. The 60 is the right-of-way width, and the 40 is the pavement width, and there's no bike lane because there's no BL.
I see, yeah.
That, that confused me too.
Hmm.
I mean, on the one hand, you could say that you only need that once, but on the other hand, if somebody's flipping through and saying, this is what I want to work with, I could see the argument for it to be nice to be there.
Yeah, that's a good point.
Well, now what I want to know is why don't any of these streets have bike lanes?
Uh, some of them do. Uh, or one did anyway. Yeah, the pedestrian passage.
Well, yeah.
[laughing] That is a really good comment though, because it would make sense to-
Village and Neighborhood Center Street.
Bike lanes in those, that's, I could, we should just talk for Kate, because we can all hear her saying, yes, there should be bike lanes on all of these.
Well, even just thinking about like a neighborhood, if you were developing a bigger neighborhood, you know, if you could say that one of your neighborhood residential streets, you know, which were, like if you had multiple streets, one of them, you know, I'm just thinking about, uh, my wife grew up in Gray Falls, Montana, it's sort of a grid, right? And, but there's a couple streets going north and south that are one-way, so you can go faster, and there's usually a couple streets, usually one or two over from that that have, are designated as the bike roads, you know, so if you're, I mean, it only applies to building sort of a bigger development, but you would have some way, ideally, I guess in this sense, it would be those connections that parallel Route 7 that would be designated as that's the bike area, those roads, you know, versus putting them out on Route 7.
Yeah, but at least there, there is space based on how the lines are painted. I mean, if you think about-
No, Route 7 has space for bikes already.
Right, they do have space, but if you, even if you think of Falls Road, I think perhaps the-
The drunken bike lane, bike lines?
Oh, yes.
Those were awesome.
Yeah.
Front porch forum was just treasure for a couple days.
It was gold. Um, yeah, I mean, there certainly would, I, I could see how, it's confusing, because drivers could think, oh yeah, that's a bike lane, but it's not a bike lane, it's a-
Not a bike lane.
No, it's, I mean, I don't know, if you're riding your bike after happy hour, it's a bike lane, but it's-
Well, it's so much better than what was there before they tried to-
No, I appreciate the, yeah, yeah, I definitely appreciate the fact that it narrowed and that there's a bit of a shoulder there.
The road lane should be the width that they were supposed to be though.
Oh, there's an issue with that as well.
I'm going to go out with a rule, I mean, there, because there are a lot of places where it's not.
Yeah.
So, so one thing, I don't know if we're on page 32 yet, are we there?
Sure.
The business park street type? Here's one case where the, that little abbreviation hierarchy thing on the title doesn't have a bike lane, but the diagram has, has bike lanes, and it's the only one that doesn't have on-street parking, you know, like a bunch of the others.
Right.
And so it seems like that specifically that section shows a bike lane, so it seems like we had to put the title-
It even defines it as having a dedicated bikeway type and a bikeway width of four feet.
Yeah.
Right.
So that title, it seems like at the top of the page should have a BL at the end, I think.
I completely agree.
Well, it just seems crazy that a boulevard and parkway doesn't have a bike. It says dedicated bike lane or path, but it doesn't have any width.
I think the problem is that all those other ones, they show street parking, and it's, I, I don't know how you do bike lanes with street parking.
Yes, so the neighborhood ones are all basically no dedicated bike thing, just with flow.
Yeah, if only it was low enough, you don't really need a lane. Bike lanes in general is a good point, if maybe we want to just say for this section, we'll, yeah, let's, we'll, we'll bring up bike lanes, because I think that that could be a discussion and we're hidden, unless you guys want to just hang out late tonight.
Let's finish it.
No, I would like to also figure out like, yeah, which other street types should have.
Yeah.
It's interesting that a business park-
Yeah, like it doesn't-
I mean, I guess that makes sense because you've got workers having to commute to and from work, so they should have a safe way to get to their business.
So once they get to the road that the business is on, they're safe.
Yeah, right. But it feels like boulevard and parkway strike me as a-
But if you think of these examples, so executive drive-
Generally meandering, that's like the perfect bike route. It says a dedicated bike lane or path on it, but it doesn't give a width.
Right, so for that business park though, if the pavement width is 30 feet and the bikeway width is four feet, so you're going 38 feet in a business park, and the examples, like executive drive-
It's 22, well, it's 11-foot travel lanes and four-foot bike.
Right.
I mean, I, I would like to speak about this at some point in the future. I, I do look at that, what's going on at Falls Road over there, and sort of when we started this conversation about the streets here, and what, what triggers these regulations to come into play, right? If you mill more than four inches or something like that, I don't know how much they milled over there, but they did some milling, right? But clearly they didn't rebuild the road, they just said, okay, wherever the road is, is where the road is, and we're going to squeeze in some sort of a bike area on the right side, and it's completely insufficient and dangerous, in my, in my view. So, right, so I would, I look at this and I'm like, well, why don't, why aren't we dealing with this, right? Why aren't we actually building roads in our regulations which support better biking?
Well, and part of that is what we're doing now, this just happens to be the form-based overlay district and-
And I, I get that, I, I also have a feeling that that's a sort of a bigger topic than sort of pushing through Brandy's, you know, adjustments, and so I don't-
Well, yeah, you guys-
I'm hesitant to, I'm hesitant to, you know, overturn the apple cart here, but-
Also, one of the biggest issues we faced here when I joined the group was, there had been some pretty big studies of Bay Road and adding a pretty dedicated bike path along there, right?
Right.
And some of the studies came up with this, you know, kind of industrial-grade thing, which predictably spun a lot of residents of that street into a bit of a tizzy, because, you know, you're looking at, and rather than looking at it as, okay, we want to get bikes from point A to point B the safest way possible, given the conditions on the ground, right? It was just kind of a, this is a best practices bike path.
Yeah.
Slapped on top of that. So it's definitely one of those issues that you've got strong advocates in town for better biking, but then there's also the, your biking rights, and at the beginning of my front lot, right, the part of my lot, I don't want you riding in my, giving up part of my lot.
Mm-hmm.
But I would agree, if we can figure out how to get this dedicated biking space on more of these street types, that would be great.
Yeah, I think it's a good conversation, but I, we aren't going to solve it tonight, and I think we benefit from having you as well.
Yeah.
I just want to throw in something, Judith and I went up to Nova Scotia in Prince Edward Island, you know, back in June, and in Halifax, we actually got pulled over on our bikes by a policeman on a bike, because it turns out in Nova Scotia and Prince Edward Island, you're required to wear a helmet, and then also you-
You weren't wearing a helmet? Come on.
Those girls, would you hide them with a helmet?
Get the permit.
Yeah.
Judith wasn't wearing a helmet, I was, no, just kidding.
This is on tape now. You better buy flowers.
But also, you're not, you're prohibited from riding your bike on a sidewalk in, in Halifax, which is their big, their biggest city in Nova Scotia. I was surprised that they have such good bike rules, it's just, it's very rural up there, but-
Yeah, I got pulled over for that in school in the late 90s, and it, it freaked me out, because the guy, I didn't even see him, this guy jumped out and grabbed my handlebars and stopped me and said, you can't ride your bike on the sidewalk.
Where was that?
A whole lot of bad stuff could have just happened.
Yeah.
Like more signage or something, I didn't know, I'm sorry, but, yeah, it was in Virginia.
Seattle is the same way, if you rode your bike on the sidewalk, you'd get in big trouble.
Wow. So, I mean, that just goes to reinforce-
Shelburne might even have rules against it.
That we ought to be providing bike lanes so that-
It makes a lot of sense, yeah.
We don't have to ride on the sidewalk.
Agreed. Yeah, so I think the bike lane will be a good discussion.
Is there any rules in Shelburne about, like if you come down the Webster Road bike path and stay on the near side there and ride up the sidewalk so that you're not almost dying in the road as a 12-year-old kid, are you breaking the rules?
Um, I'm trying to remember, I think there is something on the books that has to do with riding bikes on sidewalks. I'll double check on what it is, but I think there is-
I mean, there is some logic to that, right? Because you're moving at a very different speed than pedestrians are who can't see you maybe coming from behind and-
Yeah, there are some places that have requirements where you're prohibited from the sidewalk in the community if they have designated bike routes, and so you would have to take the bike route. If there wasn't the bike route, well then you may be able to use the sidewalk.
Right.
It may also be age allowances.
Right.
So, um, as far as the street types go, there's one other, one comment was on the pedestrian passage type, that was, it just, on page 34, it just kind of struck me as odd that it said that passages, these are for pedestrian bicycle, pedestrian and bicycle connectors that passes, that pass between buildings, and it's shortcuts through long blocks, connecting rear parking with street frontages. The thing that got me was it says passages may not be roofed over and lined by shop fronts. I get the shop fronts, it's a, it's a pedestrian passage, but not roofed over, it just struck me as that seems limiting, especially if you're looking at-
Winter in Vermont.
-bikes and pedestrians and bad weather and that sort of thing, and, I mean, why not? Put a cover over that to make it a more enjoyable experience.
Although it's a pretty short space, so you'd be-
It, it probably is, and I imagine that you'd have, you know, two different lots, two different owners, how do you, how do you come to an agreement? But just to say that it, it may not be, struck me as, um-
So that's a parking lot thing, or?
Yeah, I'll just make it a parking lot thing, it's not a full-on discussion. Okay, um, so, that, that at least gets us through the street types, do we want to just try and figure it, finish out 2204 here?
Can I, um, just one other thing on the, on the multipurpose trail? 2204 dash K, that indicates a bikeway type, is shared and dedicated, do we get the bike, the BL for the, the title?
Yeah, I think we want to add BLs to several. I mean, multipurpose trail inherently is bike ped, it wouldn't need a separate bike lane necessarily, but-
But that little hierarchy should say BL.
Well, if it's shared, it's, yeah, dedicated versus with the-
Bicycle lanes are, I mean, it's not a, a multi-use path isn't a bicycle lane. So you're thinking that MPT dash 15 dash eight BL, is how you would edit it?
If it says bikeway type, shared and dedicated, isn't that bike lane?
I would look at it as a bike lane as a separate lane, and then a multi-use pass is, path is a multi-use path.
Shared and dedicated. Well, the one that in theory should have, it's just called dedicated bikeway type.
So think of the bike path along Lake Champlain downtown, there isn't, I mean, it's, it is a bike pedestrian path, you don't have a bike lane there, it's just, it's-
It's a multi-use path.
It's a multi-use.
Webster Road, same thing, multi-use trail.
Because if you have to add a bike lane and it's four-foot width, then you're, I mean, you go from 10 feet to 14 feet for a multi-use path, technically, like, for me, I just, I'm all for bike lanes. But we can bring that up and talk about it during our bike lane discussion too.
Okay.
Um, I didn't have any comments on the last page, on page 35, section 2204 dot five, aside from Oxford, comma.
Five percent.
The open space?
Yeah.
Yeah, because this is a rural district, this is-
Yeah.
And I don't think that any of these were big edits on her part. Do you have any comments on that one?
No.
All right. Um, well, for the next one, uh, just as a, be prepared, because we're not, we're not gonna get into twenty-two oh five at this point. Um, sure. Um, if there are any questions or comments on twenty-two oh four L, the, the table with open and civic space standards, we could talk about those.
I don't have any other than, um, on the second page of that, thirty-seven, uh, the, the subtext has section twenty-two oh five at the bottom, still part of twenty-two oh four.
Oh.
Good catch.
Thanks. Um, yeah, so I guess for the, I, I mean, I'll just scrap one, I guess, where, how are we feeling? My overall comment for twenty-two oh five and the section to come, there were definitely discrepancies between the red line and the, and what we're looking at. In some cases, it just looked like the red line gave the idea and it got polished in, in this document and that was fine. In other cases, there was stuff that was in one, not in the other, and I'm curious. So that could, could get into a deeper conversation perhaps.
And if it's in here, but not in the red line, it was after, after she gave up.
Yeah, yeah. Um, so how are we doing overall?
What are we getting, another nineteen pages?
Yeah, I mean, at the rate we're going, we need two more meetings.
And how many do we have left?
For this, not enough.
I say we wait till the next meeting to do that one, to twenty-two oh five.
I, I would agree. I think from a, so we, we can, we can wrap this up. I do have, um, I do have a document that I'll, I'll share. I don't know that I talked about it last time, but I put together a, a spreadsheet for planning commission meetings that just has meetings, general agenda, any parking lot items. Um, I'll make sure that it's shared with everybody so that if something's missing or if we need to go back, like all of these parking lot items that we were mentioning today, I'll throw that in there for this meeting, so we'll have a running record of it.
Sounds good. Yeah. We're starting to talk about upcoming meetings and how far you might go. I just wanted to bring up that a while ago, there was this idea of inviting the legislators to come and give a legislative update, and I think we had talked about end of July, or end of July. Is that off the table? Should it be on the table? Do you want to?
I think it's a good thing, well, this is a good point, let's just, we'll move into other business if we're good with the zoning matters for now. Um, yeah, I think in schedule in general, uh, because, uh, I guess it was about an hour or so before this meeting, you and I got a note from Jerry, um, just inquiring about, uh, the select board is getting into prioritizations and they want to be able to, to really start moving on that, like priorities from the town plan. That's something that they're really making a priority right now. And they, he had proposed a, a discussion with at least, uh, you, me, Jerry and Lee, just to, to talk through, well, how might, what might this look like? How might we approach it? And I certainly appreciate that. Um, he had some timelines in there as well, and these, these are all things that'll unfold. But we have, we need to get through this and it's really just the Brandy changes is what we were hoping to get through. And like I said earlier, I don't, I don't have a problem with spending time on detail because a lot of us are just really getting familiar with this and it's good. Um, but it is also prohibiting us from being able to deliver a package with those changes to the select board. So at the pace we've been going, we probably need another two meetings to wrap this up. We have been picking up more than just the Brandy changes. Um, I would say probably three meetings to get form-based zoning into a contained thing where we can release the Brandy amendment with some other changes and perhaps have some good conversations around things like bike lanes and all these other parking lot items. Um, outside of that, we have potentially having legislators coming to meet with, meet with us, which I think is also important. Um, doing some planning for the, for the select board to help them with the priorities of the town plan and how they might want to approach that. Um, I'll say the same thing to them, and I think I've been pretty consistent that I think that the planning commission, um, did a good job putting the town plan together and a lot of effort into it. And we do have recommended actions and they are loosely prioritized based on priority. And, uh, my personal feeling, speaking as an individual, is that, um, the priority in which the select board goes after things is quite frankly, up to the select board. Um, I am grateful that they're looking for our input on what we might feel are priorities. And I'm sure that we'd have stuff to contribute to that conversation, so we would need at least a chunk of a meeting to get a broad stroke, I think, of what do we think those are and how could we contribute to supporting the select board? Um, so all of these things and just where to fit them in, I think ideally, all of these things would happen before October. Um, and we, I don't think we have enough meetings for all of it. So I'm, I'm open to, um, you know, things just need to happen in the way that they happen. And I know that you have your, um, conflicts as well.
Yep. What, um, I mean, it seems like the legislate, legislator is coming is a nice thing, but it's not mission critical. So I would say, you know, like, this is mission critical, this is important. Um, I think building a list for the select board or in conjunction with the select board seems, especially because we get to help shape it, seems really important.
Absolutely.
Um, you know, and then we're not even accounting for the random whatever, right? There's gonna be another project that's gonna come up, there's gonna be, you know, so.
Well, and we have the town plan amendments as well. And I know that we have a list of things and, um, you know, we can meet on Tuesday again and, uh, look at the schedule. But do we feel that, um, getting through these changes is still sort of our number one priority? Because we have active, I mean, we are trying to encourage form-based zoning and the, some of these changes that were made definitely clean things up. Uh, so that's, that's why I was putting a priority on this. Um, I am open to thoughts.
This feels like a really wise place to put our time. I mean, a lot of work's been into it. The, the commission's kind of into it. My head's in it, at least, so.
Yeah, I would support, I would support moving it forward. The only question I would have is there, is there any other way to speed it up? Um, you know?
I mean, I, yeah, we could go into.
We each take a section and do a super deep dive and just, you know, kind of, we present that to the group, you know, like.
I don't, well, I wouldn't, I wouldn't advocate for that just because I think it's important for all of us to have a collective understanding of how all these sections go together and how it all ties together.
Right.
Because some of these concepts get a little bit abstract.
I think maybe dividing up the task of looking at the, the document when it's been reformatted.
Yeah.
Right.
Divide up the task because that'll be, that'll make more sense, but.
Yeah.
Yeah.
You know, just because it seemed to work pretty well in the plan, town plan pieces when we each had kind of ownership of some areas and kind of drove, like we drove that discussion.
It did. I mean, the other, the other thing and, and just.
Because you're gonna have parallel work happening.
Right. And not to be repetitive though, but if we were really going with what our initial intention was, I would do, I would be more forceful and say, okay, like, we don't need to go through all of the different street types and building types and all of that because Brandy's changes didn't impact those. We just need to look strictly at the text from her red line document and that's it. And if it's not in there, then we'll do it another time. But I absolutely see value in actually going through it and having that context and having a narrative.
Yeah, no, I feel much more, um, able to articulate form-based zoning after going through this.
Right.
Right, too.
Yeah, agreed.
All right, so as a general thing, it sounds like we'll, we'll continue down this path, probably have, I mean, maybe we'll, if we can, schedule the next couple of meetings to maintain this topic, um, push back on the legislators attending.
I'm sure they'll be crushed.
Right.
You know?
Yeah.
I do think just to.
Very welcoming of them though.
To, to, go back to your comment about collaborating with the select board to prioritize pieces. I mean, I, I, I see that in agreeing with Andrew, has a priority also, and not just to help them and support them, that group, um, but I think that through that process, we'll also pull out the pieces that this commission should prioritize, right? So there's kind of two-fold there.
Certainly. Um, I think there was something else. Oh, uh, yeah, because we, we also know that there might be little things that come up as has happened in the past. I would say with the, work toward the select board, uh, and again, that, that note I just saw about an hour before this. So, um, we can work through whatever that preliminary looks like. And then I think the idea, um, was that once we get a general idea of, um, how, what this working relationship might look like, then, um, I'd want the commission to talk about it and see how we could expand on those ideas and how we might be able to contribute. So maybe at the, whenever we have that meeting with, uh, Jerry and Lee, um, we can get something on the next planning commission agenda and just say, hey, let's take twenty minutes to talk about what we discussed. And, yeah, it just means a little less time for this, but again, to your point, it's important as well.
Well, I, you know, I'm, I think I'm missing the next two meetings as well. I know I'm out of town for sure on the eighth and twenty-second right now. We have like dueling, I think it's like three things I'm supposed to be doing that night. Um, so, just throwing that out there.
Yeah, and another.
Kate and someone else don't show, then, you know, we've got quorum. I mean, I guess this work could happen outside of a quorum.
We can still certainly work on it, yeah.
Yeah.
And then it could just be presented at the next quorum.
Right.
I mean, the last time that we didn't have a quorum, I did offer that, you know, I'm happy to come and we can still talk in crickets. So I wasn't entirely shocked by that.
Yeah, well, I was one of the ones missing, otherwise I would have definitely said yes, you know? Nothing I want to do better on a Thursday night than.
We have done it in the past.
Yeah, no, we have, and it's, sometimes it's been great because you can.
It's just a little less formal.
Yeah.
Well, do we, do we need a quorum? Because we're not voting on any of this stuff. And so do we need a quorum in order to, to review this, review this document?
I think at the end of the day, we just, we would need a quorum to be able to vote on the package that we pushed forward. So whoever's not involved with that, as long as they've reviewed and they're up to speed and they get it and they're willing to vote, then that's.
Yeah, I mean.
You should have a quorum that agrees to warrant the document for hearing.
Yeah.
Right.
And then that also have a quorum to the select board.
But I think this kind of work, it's always been a different group each time we've been in here. So, you know, it's, it should continue regardless of quorum.
I agree.
Yeah.
Um, is there any other, other business? From, I don't have any.
Select board hearing.
Is there an update on the accessory apartments?
They approved it.
Oh, good. Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, oh, maybe we were gonna talk about that last meeting, it didn't happen. Um, yes, the select board approved that, so accessory apartments are now.
It'll take effect on the twenty-ninth.
Great. Like, two days from now?
Twenty-ninth, two days.
Or, well, today's the twenty-fifth, so.
So when do you start building one?
July.
When do you start building one in your?
It'll be a palace.
Any other announcements?
Just tall enough to see Dick's place from it. That's all you gotta make sure.
If there isn't, I would accept a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second?
Moved in second by Stephen and Andrew. Thanks.
So what's the fine for riding your bike without?
Yeah, I was curious, did they give you a warning or?
Hey, yeah, he gave us a warning. He was very nice.